So.
Did they look in like the same room? Did I see him around? Absolutely never. I see people who are sending me at them and that's about it.
Yes, I drive by. I see the.
Introduce.
Yeah.
The time is four thirty PM. Pelican Rapids City Council meeting. Nine February twenty twenty one is called order. I'd ask this time if you would please put your cell phones on vibrate and if you have not signed in on the clipboard register on the table, if you do so, you will receive me. Roll call member Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Strands.
Here.
Councilmember Penelope.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Marka.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brent Frehler.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening to our first council meeting month of February. Those that are in the council chambers also, those that are joining us on Zoom, we say welcome. Our council meetings are shown on channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. A few announcements for the next couple of weeks. This Sunday is Valentine's Day on February fourteenth. On Monday, February fifteenth, as President's Day, city hall offices will be closed. Saturday, February twentieth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM, the Pelican Rapids Park Luminary Walk will be held. Now, that was originally scheduled for this Saturday, but due to the cold weather, it's going to be moved to next Saturday, February twentieth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM. Our next city council meeting is on February twenty-third at four thirty PM here in our city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if at all, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Agenda item number two is citizens' comment. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item number three. Agenda additions or deletions? Are there any agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Motion second to approve the agenda? Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda. I'll read those items. Item number four A is approval of minutes, council meeting of January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Item four B is approval of accounts payable listing. Item four C is twenty twenty-one local board review and equalization, which will be held on April first, twenty twenty-one, here in the city council chambers from two to three PM. Item four D is household hazardous waste day on August fourth, twenty twenty-one, from ten AM to two PM at Public Works Facility. Item four E is certify unpaid fire call bill to property taxes for one-two-zero-one County Highway nine. Item four F is certify unpaid tree removal bill to property taxes for twenty-three Southwest Tenth Avenue. Item four G one is a staff report from police chief report, which is in your packet. Four G two is street and park report, which is in your packet. And four G three is financial report, which is in your packet. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Okay, let's go down to item number eight. We have our chief Jeff Statums here this evening, and he wants to talk about the police department computer request. Chief Statum?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For our third squad car, we'd like to purchase a third computer for our system. Unfortunately, with that one, it's a little bit an upgraded, which is good. Or the document station that we do have, now we have to get a new document station. And the computer with the document station and the extra memory and the power supply for the twenty-nine, uh, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. We have about nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in our corporate comp. You can use those funds to purchase. They all purchased the computer and the document station. Who does the work for? Uh, Jared. What's your name?
Yeah, I think if nothing else, it'd be nice to have a spare. And it is cheaper than the other two that we bought at the price. I think it should be.
I move to approve the purchase.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. Discussion? Discussion?
Puts it in again, I couldn't hear.
Uh, Jared Dresser, quote four. He just lives out on our three.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Chief, what was the total cost of that again?
Uh, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item number five, local foods, local places grant applicant. And we have Emily Reno is on Zoom this evening, and then we have Ryan Pesch in the council chambers are going to speak to this subject matter. And Ryan?
Well, I'm just a local color, I think. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it to Emily first.
Okay.
Let's hear from her.
Okay.
Good luck, though. I just texted you, Ryan, and I was like, I hope you're here. But I guess we're just geographically in a, in a couple of different locations. I, uh, I'm still in my self-quarantine from my return trip to Costa Rica, so hopefully next time I'll be able to join you all in person. But hello again, everybody. Emily Reno, I work as an assistant planner with Flex Control Initiative and have been kind of helping facilitate the local foods, local places steering committee over the past several months. I'm just gonna pop a couple of links into the chat as a reference for anybody who may be joining us digitally, or if you're available to look at that, you know, pull anything up on your computers while you're there. The reason that I'm coming to you today is to talk a little bit about an application that the steering committee is working on right now through the Regional Sustainable Development Partnerships, which is sort of an arm of the University of Minnesota Extension. And they have a grant application coming up. It's an idea brief, so it's actually not a full grant application. It's just their first step in terms of evaluating applicants and seeing if they would be a good fit. And then they kind of have a staff person who helps them develop a full application, develop their idea if that's necessary, and then kind of move forward. So in the last presentation that I gave to you all, I did mention that the steering committee had been talking about three different ideas for a feasibility study. And one of those ideas, which isn't new, was looking at a commercial kitchen. And we had, as we were working our way through the idea brief, we talked about important stakeholders that could be a part of this process and what might be involved. And we thought that, you know, having the, the support and/or participation of the city in some way throughout that process, be sure that you all were brought up to speed on just sort of what we were discussing. And I also wanted to take some time to talk a little bit about. I have personally been involved with three separate RSTP projects. And I will say, I think that my involvement in those projects is actually what led me to Pelican Rapids in the first place and pursuing work in greater Minnesota. So I think that that's a real tangible and positive outcome for being able to bring students who may be based in the cities, exposing them to opportunities that are out here in greater Minnesota and really showing them what career opportunities are out there. So I'm gonna put in a couple more links to the chat here as a reference. The first one is to the, the first organization that I ended up working with, which is North Circle Seeds. At the time that I started working with them, they were just an incubator starting out. My goal was to distribute and create a survey that went out to vegetable growers and gardeners all across the state of Minnesota, farmers, and really the upper Midwest, to figure out what were their preferences for purchasing vegetable seeds. And then I used that to develop a marketing strategy, recommendations for how this company could market locally, build partnerships with people, and tell their story in a really effective way. The other project that I worked on, well, I guess from that project, we ended up going into a part two because I really enjoyed working with Zach. He's actually based in Burgess, and that's actually how I met Ryan. And ended up doing a podcast project the second semester with that. So we worked with a bunch of farmers across the state and asked them about seed-saving experiences that they had had and having them share their story. And that was a really awesome experience. I got to go to different conferences across the state and meet different farmers, which is something that I'm really passionate about. So from there, I ended up building on my experience in marketing and ended up working with Agua Gorda, which is a cooperative, Latino-owned cooperative based in Long Prairie, Minnesota. So more in, in the central as opposed to west-central kind of area. And what I ended up doing with them, what recommendations for our marketing strategy, but really what I ended up doing was looking within a sixty-mile radius of where their farm was located, what were the opportunities to be selling vegetables wholesale to different places within, within that radius. And so I did about, I think I did thirty-nine interviews as part of that project and then created a set of recommendations in the next like three and six months and then a year. And as part of that, what was really cool is that the whole project was done like, I guess, bilingually. So because I'm able to speak Spanish, I was able to communicate with them in their language and able to write my final report in Spanish and ended up getting a lot of press for some of the work that I did afterwards. And I was intentional about trying to, to raise awareness that, that I did this project. I spent the summer trying to promote it. And so these other links that I threw in, one is to an article that was written recently by Extension featuring the work. And then I also interviewed for a podcast with this land stewardship project. So I think in many ways, something like an RSTP project has the potential to be marketed across the entire state and could be a really cool way to put Pelican Rapids on the map. So just kind of guiding the question, or sort of the, the presentation along here, why is an RSTP project a good fit for conducting a feasibility study for the commercial kitchen? First of all, it happens over a semester basis. So it would either be the summer, which would be like two and a half months, or the, you know, the fall, those would probably be the most likely times that, that's in the logistics place, or the spring semester. It's based around the university calendar. There is little to no upfront capital required by communities, which is really nice. So in terms of, you know, how we would write out the budget, we could provide financial support through in-kind contributions, and, and that could be all that's necessary in terms of a financial commitment. Another benefit is that it provides added capacity to help move some of the work along that the steering committee is trying to, to bring to life. And especially as it coincides with some of the work that's been done on the farmer's market, it could be really good for, for the timing of, of outreach. In terms of commitments and partnership opportunities that we've already identified, Ryan has offered to report for the student that could be hired through something like this. We are also looking at, you know, making connections to like kitchen, potential kitchen users. So we are thinking about churches, multicultural committee, the welcome place, the food shelf. And then the steering committee is also pretty behind this and excited to see, to see it through. And so they could also help with just promoting and getting the word out there that this exists. In terms of the kinds of things that a student could explore in a feasibility study, they could do asset mapping, which would include identifying like existing commercial kitchens in the city, the ability to rent them out to community members. They could evaluate the funding mechanisms and other sustainable models that have been used by, by their small towns to launch and maintain a commercial kitchen. They could also do some scenario planning. And so they would be providing, you know, recommendation A, B, C, whether that's using existing commercial kitchens, looking at vacant buildings, building something new, potentially reevaluating space above city hall, incorporating all those things together and figuring out what makes the most sense. So from there, I think I'll pass it over to Ryan just to talk a little bit more about what the end result of this might be.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thanks everyone. I think I really covered a lot of the details. I just kind of could bring it a little bit to the head. I think the part where she cut out said that I would be willing, as a local person, as somebody that has done some feasibility studies to oversee a student. So in this instance, we have a, a local operator and myself who could, if that was a challenge with a student-led project, you got students, right? So you want to make sure that we get the end result that we want, which is to really explore this idea of commercial kitchen and get down to the brass tacks. I know that the city has certainly investigated this before. And so let's, let's have a dedicated person to really take some time to look at it quite intently, to get to the point about, is this a yay or a nay? Right? So it might help us as a community figure out, does this make sense or not? And is it could be profitable or not? And so certainly, I think what we're asking of the city here today is that, I know that since you handed out some work, as you're saying, on, on this previously, that maybe some cooperation, understanding what has been done to date, that would help that student then pick up where you guys had last left off on, on that idea. So as Emily said, maybe start as early as the summer, not the fall. I get a little busy in the summer, growing tomatoes and stuff, but hey, one way or the other, we can, we can do this. It isn't too, too heavy of a lift. I've overseen students in the summer previously, so. So I'm just kind of, like I said, I'm here to be the local color, especially since I joined you last time by, by Zoom. Mayor Brent gave me a hard time, like, what, what the hey? You know? So I come here in person, at the very least, you know? And so I'm, I'm, I think I'm happy to entertain any kind of questions about this particular project or other things that related to local foods, local places.
I think Don had a question.
Well, it wasn't a question, it was more of a comment. If you recall, the, the survey that was done was, that we had online was just a basically general about the community center. The portion of it that dealt with the, the commercial kitchen, if you remember, was just at the time, Councilman CJ Hall had put together a bunch of numbers that reflected and showed based on the cost and everything else and with these kind of rates for up here upstairs anyway, you know, specific rate structure, how much the kitchen would pay for itself or generate a revenue. That's kind of what we had done to the, so it was just a council member putting together a bunch of numbers, talking to whoever he talked to. It wasn't a legitimate, yes, feasibility study on can we do a commercial kitchen or should be in Pelican.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions?
What exactly are you asking us for tonight?
I'm not asking for anything, Councilman Foster, other than the cooperation of the stuff that Don's already talked about and to give you guys an update about an activity going on in the meeting, so.
But you're talking about a grant application, we have to sign off?
Nope, you don't need to sign off on it. You'd be listed in the grant application as, as a, as a partner, but I don't, it's not officially your grant application. So there is no, there's no kind of, I think, action required by the council for this.
Question, yeah, that's, that's kind of why I thought you should come because, to clarify that, because a lot of times, if it is a grant that the city's a part of, the city becomes the fiscal host of it potentially. And for them, the reason the council would have to approve it, but if it's nothing to do with the city as far as the council, then I guess, yeah, the council doesn't need to take any action.
You're just looking for cooperation to go.
Yeah, we're looking for cooperation. Yeah, and it is exploratory, you know, the, the applicant, the applicant to this particular grant would be the, the steering committee, the local foods, local places, and so.
Any other questions from the council or any objections from the council?
I have no objections to this at all, but one of the things that was brought up the last time was that this city garden that they had. And I don't know if you have anything to do with that or not, but was that fully utilized? Were all the plots taken? I mean, because she mentioned something about the land use in that last time, and I was just wondering if that was, if you're looking for more land or what's your?
I, I don't think we are at this point. I think Julie Toonheim would know best, but my understanding is that all the plots were used last year at the community garden.
I believe it was even expanded from the previous year.
And then you possibly hope to be expanded yet further.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's a good sign that bodes well that there is this interest amongst people and both in terms of growing. You know, for my particular interest is this notion of how do we support local food entrepreneurs in our community? I am the local contact who will be moving forward with this permanent farmer's market space idea on Broadway. I do think that'll be successful. I'm committing myself for, as with my vendor hat on, for the next two years to try and help overnight that, eat that effort. So I'm kind of your point of contact as well on that. But again, another part of this, this initiative that I think has some bearing in terms of making our community a better place, so people can access good food, but we can also support those entrepreneurs that, that deal with and work with food and farming in the community as well, so.
Council, any other questions? Any, any questions from the audience here this evening? Just open it up.
Hard questions.
Is here live in person, so.
Yeah, they're live in person here.
Good.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item number six, the fire department annual report. We have fire chief Trevor Steves with us in this. The report was included in our packet this evening.
Yep, so should have that sheet that says fire call report. So this wraps up twenty-four. We rounded up the year with a total, rule calls of forty-four, city calls of thirty-two, and neutral aid calls when we went out and helped other neighboring fire departments of three. The total of seventy-nine. Total hours put in, just four fire calls, was twelve hundred and sixty-five hours. That relates to nineteen, we had about twenty-one city calls, forty-eight rule calls, five neutral aid, for a total of seventy-four. So we're right on par. And that's considering that when we got, everything got shut down in, in mid, mid-March, we didn't spin a wheel for six weeks. I think everybody was walking around and calling me, looking for batteries for their pager when the shot going out. So I think a lot of us thought that the act of opposite would happen. You have all these people at home, all these kids at home, and we're gonna have a lot more problem, but it just kind of goes to show you that problems are a result of something being unattended, you know? And, and that's a, a good, a good marker for that, whether it be cooking fires or usually when somebody puts something on a stove and gets distracted doing something else, or, or whatever it may be. So that was one of the good things out of this whole thing. We were able to continue with our training and responding to calls. We, we shut down for a couple of months. We did, we didn't quit training. What we did is we have four captains, they each have a group of firefighters called a company. They would individually take their, their, the captain and their company, then would be about five people, and go out and do a drill, just on, on whatever night. So we were able to do certain things and keep things going and get our training in and some of that, so. So that was good. Guys adjusted well, and now we move forward with that, so we're, we're back up. As far as firefighters, we had two retirements, Steve, Heidi, twenty years of service, and Brian also, twenty years. So good guys. These two were ninety to ninety-five percent guys. When I say ninety-five percent guys, they were there for ninety-five percent of the calls, trainings, almost a hundred percent. So they're the tough ones to replace because they're always there. We are getting a few applicants coming in. We're always looking for more. So we, we want to encourage anybody watching or listening, that if you are interested, you can, can I download that off the website? It is an application that is downloadable off the city website or stop in at city hall here, get an application. And, and then we'll take it from there. So other than that, equipment-wise, we're not looking at replacing any trucks now, I think for about five years. The only one, big trucks, our last one was Tanker One, which has been in service now for, this is the second year already, and that one's a seven-year lease on that. Next one will be a wildland truck, and that one will be within the next year or two, but we are putting money aside for that, and hopefully can just cash flow that. And that's a lot less of a purchase price than the big trucks. Big trucks run well north of three hundred thousand, where this thing is, you know, will be well under a hundred thousand, so we'll replace that. Questions, concerns, comments, anything?
Are you with, if you get two replacements for Steve and Brian, are you with?
Yeah, we will be. Yeah, right now we're at twenty-two to twenty-four. I don't know of any other retirements coming up. There's three of us that are over our twenty years of service. So that, that's basically the first benchmark, so you're fully vested in your retirement at twenty years, and then after that, so. I have a few more.
Don't get out at twenty, you have to go till forty or whatever.
I'm gonna say thirty. Because that's what I push for. So I have a few over that.
Trevor, what's the wildland truck? I forgot.
Uh, it's wildland two, it's a F-350 Ford. So that truck is a, goes out on, on grass fires, calls like that. It folds one of our Polaris Rangers. We bought it used, it was one of a purchase that the, between the city and funds that we had raised through our fundraising events, we were able to do it. And we bought that truck with a hundred and forty thousand miles on it. And, and we've had it for, I don't know, six, seven years now, in the, in the thought that it, it would be a short-term truck, and it, and we could turn it on and sell it for basically about a page or so. And, and getting a, a newer one then would go twenty-five years, use of that, so. Other than that, yeah, we, we did add another Polaris Ranger that you guys approved, that the purchase all through the DNR, and we were able to get that at a reduced price. And then with our fundraising efforts through the Pelican Press, Lou, good plug for you, Lou, is we were able to put our mailer in with the press, the free press that went out, when was that, July?
July.
July, got over eight thousand plus of our residents around and a few other communities, and had generated for us enough money to purchase that, outfit it with the proper equipment. We bought a trailer for it, so that really was zero taxpayer dollar pair dollars on that, so. And it was a nice, a nice addition, so. That's what we always are striving for, so. Any other questions or?
Any more questions from the chief?
No. Thanks, Trevor.
Yeah, thank you guys for your support.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all you do for our community. Item number seven is poll committee minutes. Those are in your packet for your review, and we have a member of the poll committee here this evening, if you have questions about that packet. We have Kate Martinez, Amy King, Mark Dawkins, Rudy Martinez, and I believe Amy's been.
And Trevor.
And Trevor, yeah, Trevor too. Put on your other hat, Trevor.
Well, first of all, just thank you for allowing us to come tonight and give you an update on. update on 2020, getting to 2021. The pool committee has been very, very active, and first, we'd like to just thank you for all of your support, seeing the city chair, saying hi on our Facebook page, district council members and people in the community, we appreciate your help moving this forward. It's been a super big passion of ours as a committee, and we're just, we're so proud to be a part of this community. We're proud that people have stepped up in big ways in donations, people just have really rallied around this idea, and I'm super excited about moving this project forward. So we wanted to bring you an update here as we finish off 2020, looking at where we got to dollar-wise with our fundraising efforts, and then looking forward as we go forward with this project. So you'll see it up on the board and also here in your handout. This is just an update as of basically this week, February 2021. Again, our project goals are over there, they're still the same, those three goals that we set from the beginning, to build safety, inclusion and safety, and promote healthy living here in our community. We're still moving forward with those pillars. Our initial pool project fundraising goal was three-point-seven million dollars, which for a town our size is very aggressive, and yet we fully believe that it's something our community needs and will support and will just become a gem for our community for years to come. As of yesterday, or two-seven, I apologize, on Sunday, our funds raised are two-million four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents. So absolutely phenomenal. We've been at this project oh, eighteen months-ish with actual fundraising, I believe, and so really pretty excited that we can put that in writing. Underneath that is a breakdown.
Amy, can you say that number again, please?
Yep, two-million four-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents is listed here on that. So breakdown, just to know where that's coming from, was the initial city council commitment of one-point-two million when we came, it was, I believe it was November of 2019 when the city committed that. And then corporate and private donations, we have gotten eight-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. In-kind donations, which is trades that various businesses here in town have committed, is fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine dollars, and that's based on their rate of service. There's four businesses here in town that have decided to cover the cost of demolition of the old structure, and so that gets that about fifty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-nine. And then one of the things that we've talked a lot about, if you follow our social media campaigns at all, is our matching funding. We had a very generous donor that gave us five-hundred-thousand dollars cash initially. She's a previous resident of Pelican Rapids and has some money to give back now later in life. So she initially gave us five-hundred-thousand dollars, and then she offered a matching of another five-hundred-thousand dollars as we raised those funds. As of this week, we have earned out of that five-hundred, that three-sixty-three, eight-fifty-three, three-sixty-three that you see there, three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. So we did not quite reach our five-hundred-thousand-dollar goal by the end of 2020, but our donor is incredibly generous. She has a heart for Pelican Rapids, believes in our project, and wants to see it moving forward, so she has graciously extended her match. And so we will continue to raise funds here in 2021, and she has committed to matching that five-hundred-thousand when we get to that point, which is phenomenal. So we weren't sure her decision of that until mid-January, when she was given the opportunity to decide, and she is going to continue that. In fact, when she sold her stock and gave the initial five-hundred-thousand dollars, forty-thousand dollars was realized in gains from that stock that she didn't anticipate. She donated that in cash. She's actually putting that into our matching pot because she didn't think she was giving that initially, so she's matching her own forty-thousand dollars as a gift to the city, which is pretty cool, so. So yeah, any questions on the matching piece? That's kind of our first update. All right, well, as we continue, I just wanted to put down, there's a picture of our group. This was one of the campaigns that was run, and we had a private donor that said they would match up to a thousand dollars, fifty dollars per picture that was taken outside in summer-themed clothing by our big sign that sits out across from the high school on Fifty-Nine. This is our committee, not all of us are pictured there. It was really, really cold, but we had a blast with it. And it was amazing to see, on the backside, you'll see there's a couple pictures of young children in our community as well that went. The community support that rallied around that, if you have not seen the Facebook page of Pelican Rapids School, which I checked out, it is so cool to see. Lou has done a great job highlighting it in the newspaper as well, we forwarded them to him, and we actually have printed all the pictures and sent them out to our donor in Washington, and she has them all pasted inside of her cupboard to look at all the kids that were leaving pictures by the school sign. So just a really fun campaign to end the year and to gain a little bit more momentum, so. On the side, we have a front, I just want to go through our timeline of kind of up to this point, just to remind you where we've been. Back in 2012, our current pool was deemed unsafe and unrepairable. We're now eleven years past that, and so we're, or ten years, apologize, almost ten years past that. Also, the pool committee had voted on, the community vote on designs, and the new current pool design was chosen back in 2012, as well as being approved by the city council at that time. In 2018, our current pool committee was revived, and we began strategizing for fundraising, and in 2019, we picked off our fundraising with a commitment here from the city. Also, in 2018, our private donor came forward. In 2020, we had wonderful momentum, starting the year, we were so excited, and then like most things in our world, it really came to a halt in March when everything shut down. And our committee was really at a loss of what to do for the first couple months of the pandemic, because it just seemed, how do you approach people, how do you continue that momentum that we've been so excited about? And we went dormant for a little bit, because we just weren't sure how to do that. And then as the summer got rolling, we really just felt there were some unique days, we could reach out to businesses, we did it via phone, via email, contacts, as you stopped in a store, if you happened to see someone, and we're so, so excited that even amidst the pandemic, we were able to raise this amount of money. Just really proud every person in the community that helped move it forward, so. With that, I would love to, if there's any questions about what I presented so far, I would love to go into just a cost update and some things, kind of looking to the future of when I actually get to building the facility. So anything to this point, any questions I can answer? All right. At the bottom of the front side, it just talks slightly about the solar panels. This is one aspect that the city council will have to decide if they would like to include these going forward. We have got a quote and been working with design intent to integrate that into our overall cost, because solar panels are energy efficient, there's also some rebates out there and possibilities to make this a more environmentally friendly facility. So at the bottom there, the estimated cost for a facility is one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars. That's the initial cost of installing solar panels on the facility. There are rebates available, the estimate right now is almost sixty-thousand dollars in rebates, so approximately half of the cost of solar panels is what the rebate estimate is throughout Otter Hill Power at this point. Oh, come on, now Trevor's got more to say. I'm going to turn it over to him and talk about solar panels, he's way more involved in that.
Can I pass this on to this?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Trevor. You want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, please do, that'll do more.
So I don't know how or why I became so worried, but I can tell the spots are a little bit small for my age and eyes too. So basically, like Amy said, it's about one-hundred-and-seventeen, a little more than that to install it. This is a breakdown, and this was done by real solar company from Bacchus, Minnesota, which is just to the east of us. And these are pretty, are real numbers, is what they ran. So if you look at going down on the side, they come up with how they come up with that total for, you know, electrical parts, you know, insulation and everything. And then they have, if you don't pass your payments, they have their utility rebates, but fortunately Otter Hill Power is our utility, and they're about the best rebate power company in the state of Minnesota. They're really good. I have spoke with the guy from Otter Hill, they fund up to fifty percent. They have a formula, but he said basically it comes down to fifty percent of the project. So then, if you go down to that next bottom column, or group there, after the rebate of fifty-eight-ish thousand, it says a thirty-year energy value over thirty years, it's a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars. So the education that I got on this is during our operating times, we will use more energy than we produce, so we get it built. During the times when we are not in operation, these things are producing energy, and then it's pushed back to the power company. And that's why it's really important that if this is a direction that you guys see that we should go in, that it's engineered into the facility at the on-start, at the beginning of the design, because that makes it a lot more feasible and a lot easier to do it, to get that pushback stuff. So like, a day like today, not going to be producing a lot of energy, there is a chart on there that shows it's about eighty-one percent efficient, when you take out the shade days, snow days, the rain days, stuff like that. So it, all that is put into consideration for our climate, our demographic, obviously if we're in Florida, it's a lot different than being in western Minnesota. So that's all figured in here, and then one of the biggest things we talked about is light, because I can see how these, you know, either they can last ten years, twenty years, thirty years, and they have units out there that are thirty years old and still go. So there's, the durability is there, and they keep getting better. These don't come without some maintenance, there is some maintenance, and Brian is aware of that, because this would fall on their department. Sometimes you gotta go up and clear snow, you have to do some things, you know? If there's some tree in the way that's getting some branches that are causing shade, we don't want that. So there is a little bit of that cost, but overall, there's not really any moving pieces to this, so. It's just kind of a little caveat, if you will, of we're doing this project, you know, it's putting forth the idea where I'm looking to the future of being somewhat a little more energy efficient, but like I said, we're going to be using more energy than this thing is going to produce during operation.
But Trevor, these panels, they're sized appropriately for the size of the pool, I assume?
They're sized appropriately to the size of the building.
Okay, the building. But where are the panels located then?
I can't tell you the specifics of how they look, where they're going to be placed, but it does give a square footage here of the amount of light capability, or, you know, the square footage of the solar panels.
So they're mounted on the building themselves, they're not in the yard, they're not in the yard, right?
Right, right. Is what they originally had towards, so.
Any other question? What's square footage?
Did it say that?
Eighteen hundred somewhere.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
Okay, all right, there it goes.
Obviously, you go bigger, and that's a question to ask, is there a point of, you have to have so much to make it feasible to do it? You know, you just don't want one little solar panel, put in all this front-end equipment that's gonna take forever. So yeah, so there's, it's sized according to what they feel the payback would be, if that makes any sense. Obviously, if you go bigger, you're going to collect more and your payback would be shorter, but then your investment is higher. You know, Otter Hill still will go up to fifty percent, but, you know, our number just keeps going up. So there is a point of, you know, just diminishing returns.
But in my experience with solar, you can never do any better than break even.
That's exactly right. So after thirty years, we have it, and hopefully, I don't know, hopefully some of you guys may have retired. But, you know, I, yeah, no, I won't, you know, but it will be, you know, maybe something that's still going strong, I don't know, you know? But, so yeah, Kurt, you're exactly right, it's, you know, probably a net zero when you're all set and done with it.
On the good side.
Yeah.
Go for that.
Yep, so if it's something that you wanted to, you know, boost your project or whatever, that's the way to look at it.
Counsel, Mr. Trevor?
I was curious if they have experience with swimming pools at Bacchus?
Yeah, they, well, they have put these everywhere, he said, and it's really, for private industry, the tax incentives are what, you know, along with the rebates from the utility company, but privately, the tax incentive incentives are what make it feasible.
And the costs are just going down a little?
Yeah, they are. So there's two companies, one is based out of Minnesota and another one is a Ford made, and that's the ones that they use one or the other, depends on how they'll build. Okay, so what is your question for us? Go ahead.
I think you're doing a great job. You heard all the fire numbers, you can do more. So that is more of a prior information on the solar panel side, and so if you'll turn over your handout, and then Kate's gonna give you one more, did you give me the cost? Yeah, a cost breakdown. So coming tonight, we wanted to do not only an update on our fundraising numbers, but then on the cost of the project, because we went back to the design intent, the original numbers that we looked at as a committee was from 2018, when we updated those, when we restarted our committee, they updated from the 2012 numbers. So we asked them for an additional, or an additional update for our project costs. So on this sheet that Kate just handed out to you, you will see an update, you've seen this before, it's broken down the exact same way they've done it all on the project, just with current numbers based on project costs. The biggest change is you'll notice that we also did have an estimate that solar included on this sheet, just to give you an idea of what that does, so that includes the one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-dollar cost that we just talked about. So that could be easily removed, could be added, just depending upon what the city council decides to do. So just looking at that, and it's broken down then on the backside of your color handout as well, costs have risen. At the time when we started our fundraising efforts, we were looking for three-point-seven million worth of total. We have now passed the threshold of four million for this project, and that's just inflationary costs over the last few years. It does also take into account the solar panels, so now, this does not have the rebates listed, so that cost would go down slightly, but we're hovering right around that four-million-dollar cost. The reason we bring this to you is because we would like to talk about timelines going forward. With anything, things get more expensive with time, and so we are really excited about this project. We work really, really hard here in Pelican Rapids, but we also know that we come to a point where we're gonna have to decide if this project is moving forward or not. And so tonight, what we're asking for is the opportunity from the city council to move forward, getting more specific plans, to have those specs drawn up, so that we could start the bidding process for this project. The committee has not done fundraising, we are not quitting those efforts. We have, in fact, what has been discussed has about sixty-thousand dollars, not realized yet, not in cash, but that has been discussed among donors here in the last couple weeks, and we're gonna continue to look at every second rate we can and keep talking with people. That being said, we're a community of a certain size, and so we're hitting a threshold where we asked a lot of people, and are kind of hitting that tipping point. And so as a committee, our goal for timeline today is to present to you, to get the go-ahead for our plans and specs for the actual facility, and going forward with that, so that would involve, I'm not sure, design intent possibly, or whoever decides to put together those specifications, so that then we would be ready for the bid process a little bit later this year. Our goal would be to bid the project here in 2021. Again, like I said, we have in-kind donations that have been donated for the removal of the old facility. The committee would love to see that happen fall of 2021, so this year. And then we would love to move forward with building in the spring of 2022. That's kind of a timeline that we've talked about with pool builders, is they start in the spring, and you'll lose part of a season, but not an entire pool season, just because of ground sowing and being able to move, but if we're able to remove the old facility in the fall and get that finished, it's ready for building in the spring season, and we're afraid if we continue on past that point, costs will just continue to grow and grow beyond what we have capacity to fundraise for. So just to review, kind of what we're looking for today is approval to move forward with plans, specs, that will incur some cost for the city, but it'll at least allow that next step to happen while we're continuing fundraising efforts on our end, so.
Do you know what those costs are at this step?
Yeah, just after that, I talked to the design intent today a little bit about the process, and really that is where we're at, is we want to have, I think it's a good idea to have the plans and specs put together and be ready- put together and be ready to bid it out. We have, if you recall, we had been putting, for a couple of years, we put money aside for the pool, and so we have some funds. I, I don't remember, I don't know what the balances are now, but I'm thinking it's a hundred plus, thousand dollars. It won't cause anyone near that through times and specs, but I, I would, I think we should take the money. Design Intent is putting a proposal together so you'll have a better idea what, what, what's involved. It's kind of like putting together a, a proposal that, that outlines the work they're going to do all the way from not only the, putting the plans and specs together, but also through the construction oversight, just like you see from Bob and Apec for the, for the pools and the street. So he's going to put that together with the intent that hopefully he'd have it all set and before the council, the first meeting in March. So then we'll have an idea what the cost will be. But I think for, for the sake of tonight, knowing that you want to go forward with getting plans and specs together, I think is, is something that the council should decide on to start moving forward with that. There's still a lot of discussion to be had when we get to that point, because as Scott's putting the design together, he works with the pool design guys. He's got some firms that he works with to put all this together, because there's not only the pool part of it, but there's also the building side of it, the building, shower, room, and that type part of it too. So, he's got two or three different companies that he works with as he puts together the plans and specs. But he's also going to be talking with the pool committee, and maybe even back to the city council, because that building needs finishes inside. Then the, then things have to be decided again. The solar, if, if you guys, you know, add the solar to it, which I think is a good idea from what I've been seeing, then he also gets the solar company involved. And that's all that gets put into the plans and specs so that when you get a bidable document, so it's time to go off for bids, all that stuff was included. There is a little bit of, of, a little bit of stuff that I talked him about that, that I thought he needed to be aware of as it relates to the in-kind contribution. Because normally, in the plans and specs, you'd have a section for demolition and removal. Also, part of the discussion that we'll be having as we put these plans and specs together are the demolition and how that stuff plays into it. Because if we've got a couple of local contractors or whatever, or companies that are willing to do that part of it and haul the stuff away, well, that kind of sets the stage for the plans and specs really gets started for when, when it's time to build up, because everything's been removed. So in a sense, we're giving them a better why. So there's a lot of discussion to have around what the plans and specs will have in it, but we need to get going down that road.
Was that demo included in the first estimate?
Yeah.
There's a num, there's a number in there. So that, and there's no sense in taking that out right now. But as, as things move forward and get more towards the bidable documents, that will all be reflected in the bidable documents.
He could have this to us by the first of March, you said?
The first meeting in March. The first council meeting.
The estimate, right? Not the full plan.
It'll be, it'll be the proposal of what will be in there, and it, it'll have a breakdown of what it should be for him to, to develop the plans and specs, go through the whole construction phase, a bit oversight, overseeing the construction part and all the way to the finished project. So, so that's what, that's what it'll be at the end. But, but as far as, as far as his proposal showing getting us the, the bidable documents, that'll be one part. So it could be kind of phased out, or phased, just like we do when we see an engineer on a, on a street project or another project also.
So if this is approved, you're going to go to bids at this bottom?
Whatever timeline gets, gets, gets established in those documents that we're all, we all have to have discussions on. But yes, her timeline, as she has on this sheet, isn't necessarily out of line. I mean, it could definitely be this timeline. That's still yet, I mean, that's, that's your goal, timeline goal. It may deviate a little bit based on, again, additional funding that's needed. But I think he can put the plans and specs together from the intent that if it's, if it's, if we're going ahead with the project, this timeline or his time, the timeline of the project will be established in the, in that proposal. But I think from the, from the very minimum, the council should approve moving forward with getting the plans and specs proposal so we can go on that.
Council?
I'll make a motion that we proceed to get these plans and specs in place.
Motion and second. Discussion? Discussion? If this project could move ahead and we start constructing, you don't, how much of the swimming season are you losing? The whole season?
We've heard a couple of different estimates. We've heard on one end you lose a month, and it could be open by the first of July. We've heard you could lose a whole season. I think it depends on when you're able to get started in the spring. Depends on how long the rest.
We're doing our luck with contracting projects.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
Probably going to lose a couple of seasons.
You know, really, I think, I think, I think a realistic timeline, this is what we'd like to see, but I think the realistic timeline would be developed and thought out through the plans and specs document, just like it is in any other project that we do.
Any, do you plan on opening, I mean, do you open the summer? Or is that a goal?
That, the goal would be.
Super blue.
All as far as existing pool, yes. Right now, the plan is to open the current pool.
Any more discussion?
One thing that I would like you, to see you do is when you put your plans together for the new pool, is give us an estimate of what it's going to take to staff it and operate.
Sure. And we do have operation costs. That's been estimated out as a part of the initial estimate from Design Intent. As far as staffing-wise, Brian has been a part of that, being, you know, with the current pool staff. And his understanding is it's not going to take a lot more than we currently have, just because of the different points where you can place people around the pool and, and the vantage points that they have. When the slide is in operation, it might take an additional one to two people, depending, but we can also determine the specific hours that that is open. It may not be open every hour the pool is open. And that can be dependent upon staffing. But otherwise, you know, we've talked about that from the beginning, that that is, needs to be sustainable for our community, and he's at a hundred percent with his current staffing that he's had the last several years. He has no concerns whatsoever with the staffing levels needed, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the say. Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I highlight one more thing for you? I'm really proud of, at the bottom, I forgot to highlight this. On the backside of your color document that I handed out, one of the challenges we ran was an alumni challenge, and we challenged the alumni Pelican Rapids High School to donate, see how much each class could donate. It's tiny down there, but we can get to a larger copy if you would like. It was absolutely phenomenal to see the response that we got from TRHS alumni. We were able to raise over fifty thousand dollars through that alumni challenge. And you can take a look at the different classes that are highlighted down there. Don's putting that pie here too. And anyone's class that donated five thousand dollars or more will be recognized on our donor wall at the end. And so we had just a fantastic response. It was really fun too, just to hear things on social media of like, they call out their class of, "Come on, class of whatever year, where are you?" And it was just really neat to see kind of that camaraderie. And we had people that are no longer living here in Pelican Rapids that sent large, significant donations back to our community, because they were, want to still be a part of what's going on here. They believe in the future of this place. And so we just wanted to highlight that. We are so thankful for all those that donated. And we want to give a special thank you to Lou as well. He's truly been our partner through this whole thing. And this is how we found her, by an owner of Charlene Mullin. And she read about it in the paper, the initial articles that Lou wrote is how she found us and has continued to support us. That's what she looks for for updates. Every single week, she reads the paper from the back. And so many people are touched by that and have seen that. I know even my kids, when they see different things about the pool or them and the, you know, they've been in pictures. It's just, it's so awesome for our community to be highlighted. So thank you too for your partnership. We appreciate you.
Can you get a picture of Lou in the press?
I'm thinking you by the sign with.
In a swimsuit.
I avoid that sign. I like the other side.
Is there any other questions that we can answer while we're here tonight? I kind of dominated. I have fantastic, I have so much to contribute as well, but. Well, again, thank you for your time. We, you know, we very much appreciate your support and allowing us to come and present.
Thanks for all you're doing. We just want to project forward. Item number nine, resolution two zero two one, death zero two eight on time. Resolution, Daniel.
In the past, when legislature's been a section, there was always going to be discussion about LGA. The city has basically passed resolutions and gotten sent off to our legislators, knowing how we stand on the LGA issue. In the past, it was a support of increasing LGA. Well, this time, it's, it's a resolution that they pay LGA on time and in full with the budget shortfall coming, you know, in the dynamic, dynamic, that's Lou predicted. So, we put this, a lot of cities are doing this, and we just felt that it'd be important for Pelican also to be heard, so we put this resolution together. You guys approve it, and we'll get it off to the appropriate people so that everybody has it.
Have we done this before?
Yeah, like I said, it's, in the past, it's always been an estimate, supporting an increase in LGA back to the two thousand and three or whatever limits. Now, it's just supporting, with a lot of other cities, we want to be paying full and on time.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the say. Motion carried. Item number ten is Minnesota Housing Finance Agency Amendment Number Three. And that is also included in your packet. And Don is going to speak to that.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Can you go back? Taking a new place off the floor.
Well, yeah.
I found it really, really quick. One of the things I forgot to highlight is that we're still looking for grant opportunities. And one that we would like to move forward with is there's a Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. It's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of matching funds. You have to provide a match of that, whatever you're awarded. But the grant application is due in March. And so I would like to request permission that we could go ahead and pursue that on behalf of the pool committee. So that, we were chatting, I forgot to ask that. So I thought I'd go back in here since I'm here and see if we can do that.
Yeah, you want to do it. I think that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar match could be the donation.
Absolutely, yes. We could actually use the cash, I think, already that we have as that match.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the say. Motion carried. Okay, don't go away.
Okay.
Let's go down to Park Board Report. Bring it, it is here. If you've got any question, the Park Report was in our packet. Have you got any question for Amy?
We're really excited for our luminary event. Again, we moved it just because of temperatures, but it's been a great partnership. We're using, the luminaries from Maplewood, friends of Maplewood, they have, they're providing those. And then you approved a small class that we can use. We'll have some more of that meeting. We would love to have you all come out and join us on the trails. And then Trinity Church is offering a free family movie night in their parking lot afterwards. Not done in partnership, but in partner of the same evening, so that then they can have people stay if they would like to watch a fun family movie. They've also moved theirs, because the whole dispense is then safe for anybody to be out, so.
Any questions for Amy? Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, item number ten, Minnesota Housing Finance Agency Amendment Number Three, which is included in our packet.
Yeah, this, it relates to the, to the infrastructure project out here, extending water and sewer out to the new column apartment building. And if you recall, obviously, the state's working slow. But we, we sent them a letter a while back asking them to extend the deadline. The deadline for that grant and those dollars being used up was May of two thousand and twenty-one. And we know that because we have to wait for spring before we can finish the second, the lift there, the tune this lift, the final lift course and all that stuff. All that, it was going to go beyond May twenty-one. So we were going to ask them for another extension. The other thing was, they typically only pay out three times during this, this grant. And because we've, we're over, we've spent, we've applied more towards this project than they've given us to this point, we asked them if they would consider allowing us to do another draw instead of cash flowing this thing until November, or once, when, when the project, now the paperwork are complete. And so that was also a request. And then the third request was, what we'd like to see in the amendment was, due to that dewatering, there was sixty-five thousand dollars of unforeseen costs that we had. So we asked them, also if they would consider increasing the amount of the grant by the amount of our dewatering, extra dewatering cost. Well, if you read through the amendment, we got two out of three. Basically, they extended the, the grant application until November first, which should give us plenty of time to get the project done, get all the paperwork done. And they're also approving that they will allow us to, of the, of the two hundred and fifty-nine, I think, thousand dollars that's left that we can apply for, they're going to allow us to ask them for a hundred and ninety-three, seven, sixty. I don't know how they came up with that number, but. And then the remaining sixty-five thousand, two forty, we, we can request, once we get everything completed, we send in the final paperwork with that pay request. What they did not approve was the sixty-five thousand dollar added cost. And, and the reason basically was because, again, the state's looking at this big deficit, and they don't know what their funding is going to be from the state in the future. So, they said, no, we're not going to, we're not going to do that. So, what I need from the council is approval to sign off on Amendment Number Three. Once, once I sign off on that, or we sign off on, we'll get it down to them. Once it's executed on their end, then I will ask for the whole hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven, sixty, which will just be the sixty-five thousand dollar balance in the debt, if you can, once the project's completed, so. So, move.
Second. Our motion is second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold is the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Don. Item number eleven is a library report, which is in your packet. Kurt, you have anything to add there?
Children's librarian's been offered a position and accepted. Library board did approve a two percent pay raise for Annie, and we'll call both.
All for all staff?
Or for, for the, for the staff, Annie and the staff. What am I missing, Kevin, Annie?
ESL started again.
Take it.
ESL classes have started again. Uh, she's, Annie said that, I'm trying to say this right. The numbers of visitors in the building are just about back to Thanksgiving-ish time when the second shutdown hit. So, they're picking up. Uh, they did talk about two things for the, or three things for the roof. One, it's still not done. Two, the roofers, uh, when they used their ready lifts or whatever those big forklifts were, parked them on the sidewalk, it broke the sidewalk on the...
East side, right?
I thought it was on the north side, so, oh, yeah, it was, anyway, it's cooling water and freezing, so.
It forced it way into the ground.
That'll have to get extended. Third, they put, they re-roofed that front conion on the north side of the building, and they didn't put any snowjacks in, so it's all, all that ice is coming right down on, to the sidewalk. So, the, the question was whether Brian can just put snowjacks in, but then that got shot down because we didn't want to screw around with the warranty on the roof. So, it was going to be brought to the attention of the architect and hopefully rectified eventually. Do you know?
Last week, I called the architect, you know, concerned, because I'd visited with Annie one day last week prior to this, and she pointed out some observations. Uh, they demolished one of the trees in the front yard. I mean, I think it's what we cut down. They used a Pelican press roof for a staging area, and I don't know what the damages may be incurred there. And, you know, that area on the, be on the southeast, which we enclosed, you know, that open area where they put the roof? They put gutter around there, and then they punched holes in the gutter to drain the water out. For some reason or another, there's a big ice buildup where that is. I, I mentioned that to Scott, and he said he had wrote a letter a few weeks ago to the contractor, and he has not heard a thing yet. Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know if they've just washed their hands of the project or what. They're holding, they're still holding a lot of money on this project, aren't we?
Yeah, I think there's seventy-some thousand or something.
What was this for, five, possibly, twenty-seven?
Over one, twenty-seven?
Yeah.
It was over two hundred.
For whatever reason, I thought there was like a hundred and fifteen thousand left that they're not, that they would be waiting for.
And I don't know if we've done anything with bids for interior repairs or not.
I think there has been some contractors looked at it. I don't know if they've ever gotten that. Part of that was just to inspect damage inside the wall and things like that, insulation.
Was that something that the contractor had them look into, or was that something you guys that worked at the library?
We just had a few contractors, local contractors, asked them about it and had them come in. And I don't, I think one of them was asked to create a bid so we'd have an idea. And I don't know that that ever happened. If, I don't think we got the bid back.
I think at some point, what the library board might want to talk about is, or the city, probably the city, is identifying all the problems with the building, putting and getting costs on them, and then sending a letter to that contractor saying, you get this done by a certain date, or we are going to fix it, and we will deduct that from what you're still owed.
And I know there is a complete punch list drawn up. I don't know if the architect's had to look at it or not, but I know that that's been done. Whether or not we have prices to fix it, I don't know.
I think the architect was the one responsible for the punch list. I think he's the one.
Well, he's the only one we can be attentive of.
Yeah, we got to go through here. And Lou, do you know of any damage that you foresee?
No, but the roof, they used our roof for staging without even asking. They just, we just started hearing noise on the roof.
Come on.
Yeah, I called that to their attention, and they, they were going to inspect it thoroughly and get back to me.
I have another inspector inspected, to be honest.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that was some pretty heavy equipment that they had up there.
I don't know if they had a lot of equipment up there.
Well, there was, there was sheet, but they were storing sheets up there.
Materials, yeah.
And I myself saw where they were spinning the sheets to get them into position, and that moves a lot of gravel on your roof.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So.
I know Wishair Barber Shop, you know, they, well, they blocked him. I mean, they know, they parked both the ready lifts right in front, and it was part of the area.
I don't recall, but I thought there was some damage over there too. He was just not going to say anything about, but now.
There was damage on the air conditioner.
Yeah.
So, so stay tuned.
It was unbelievably weird deal.
Kurt, since you're on the board, do you think the board, the library board would be willing to sit down with the council, with a mediator, to talk about the...
I don't know why, now. I thought it was a good idea when you brought it up last night. I did not bring it up to them, but I would have assumed somebody would have said something. I kind of thought somebody would say something at our last meeting, you know, because they are aware of the council meeting.
So, I, I mean, I know, I, I brought it up as I was sitting here before the meeting. Um, and there's, we should probably wait till after we get a determination from payday company or not, whether that's... But I, I still think, I don't want that to get swept aside and forgotten about.
No, I personally, I'm not speaking for the board, but personally, as a person on the board, I think it's a good idea. I do, I think it'd be beneficial for both parts.
So, again, I just, I don't, I don't want to keep bringing it up, I just don't want it to get forgotten or swept aside. Because that's, it's gone, I mean, this relationship has continued to spiral downwards for the last ten years, and it should have been addressed.
Don, do you have any knowledge of when you'll get that determination?
No. I'm surprised I haven't gotten it, because when I talked to her the last time, after, after she had received the stuff from the library, and I talked to her on the phone, she expected, her, her attorney had everything, and she expected that to be a week or so. I'll send her another email tomorrow, but I'm surprised I haven't seen it. She thought it would only be a couple of weeks.
After you receive that information, then we can move this forward, meet with the library board and city council. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Item number thirteen, planning commission minutes, which are in your packet. Any questions there? If not, item number fourteen, city administrator report. Don?
Yep, since, since the last meeting, we had another department head report, um, or a meeting. Also, working with the Algega, the Gendisep, and then obviously, the technology being ready for the meeting on the day of the meeting. It's been a little bit more and more involved, it seems. We got the replacement smartboard. The other one had to go back for a minor little problem. This one seems to work, so they, we tried troubleshooting it. It was a very simple issue, we thought, with the remote. It's just the other remote wouldn't work, and they all of a sudden said, well, we'll send you another board. So, working with, to get this one, get the other one all packaged up and freighted back to them. So, everything seems to be working good there. I did attend the, the comprehensive planning steering committee's meeting on the twenty-eighth of January. Also, completed and submitted the PFA. Every year, we have to do a PFA compliance report for the wastewater project. So, I got that all finished up and sent the information to them. Kind of, part of that report, uh, tells them how much money we are setting aside in that reserve fund that has to be set aside based on the amount of the fluid from the wastewater plant. And also, had a virtual meeting with Apex in engineering. Worked on some information for the local foods, local prices, maybe regarding that grant. It's another thing that they were looking for regarding the, the, the kitchen. Also, every year, we have to file a, and submit to the state, a tier-two hazardous materials inventory. You know, every year, and so, we, we generate, we have hazardous material stored at the pool, at the wastewater plant, the water plant, and at the airport, and the form of, I don't know, so that's got to all be reported every year. We file a report, they send us invoices. I guess they want to look at, and look at our paperwork, they need to be paid for, and, yeah, so. So, that's all taken care of. Every year, we also do a municipal boundaries adjustment report that gets filed with the state. It's a pretty easy report for us right now, because there hasn't been any annexations or anything like that. So, it's just take the information, fill out their document that says no changes, and get it to them. So, that's pretty simple, but it is something that'll be more involved, shouldn't we have any annexations or that type of thing, to change our mapping? I also attended the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, did an update on the COVID-nineteen and how, how it relates to public employment, economic development. And it's good to set in on that stuff, because it seems like the, the leave laws, uh, medical leave laws and, and all that type of stuff just constantly changes at the rates of COVID. Some of the stuff that was put in place expired at the end of the year, and, and so, to know what's expired and what might be reinstated and all that type of thing, that stuff is good information. Also, remember the potential developer that has to do with senior housing, and we'll see how that unfolds. But we, I've been kind of talking with him off and on for quite a while now, and hopefully, it sounds like something might come out of that. And we'll, we'll learn more about that as we go. I created the City Hall YouTube channel. So, we are set up for YouTubing. We are in the process of, I didn't, I didn't realize that the library had one. And we were providing the library with all of our council meetings up until, remember, we, we were giving them, they would give us a disc, we'd put the video on there, the library would take it, and, and we thought they would bring it on to disc for people to check out. Well, it turns out, they have a, a YouTube channel. And as I was going to create the cities is how I figured out that the library had one. We didn't know they had one. And when I went to the YouTube channel of the library, the only thing on their YouTube channel is city hall council meetings. There's no videos of library board meetings, which, why not? They got a channel, I think it'd be great if they started putting their library board meetings on that channel. Anyway, the, the city, there was probably from twenty-eighteen going forward, they quit putting the city council meetings on that channel in May, or, uh, April of twenty twenty, which is about the COVID time. So, I think that has something to do with why they quit, you know, we'll call it COVID reasons. So, with the channel that we've now got, after the council meetings, the next day, when Annalise is uploading the council video to the cable access channel to Arby, then she, when she's done with that, she will upload this video to our YouTube channel. So, everybody can go, right now, they can go to the city's website, the homepage. On the right side, there is a link that you just click there, and you get to our channel, and you can see all the videos are posted there, and you can watch the city council meetings. So, those aren't livestreamed, but they are, so we're not going to, at this point, we're not going to provide videos to the library anymore. If that's what they were doing with them by just putting, if they are, if they are creating them to check out.
Yeah, they are.
We'll continue to do that, once they start giving us the U, the USB or the device to put the videos on. And I don't think they've come to get any of them for quite a while, but I know. So, until they ask for them again, we, we won't, you know, we'll provide when they want them. But we've got them on our own channel now, so there's no reason for them to put them on your channel. Well, it'd be great to see the, the library meetings on that channel.
Don't bring that up. I'd actually forgotten about it, you know, if it led along.
Yeah, and it's, I'm finding it's, it's pretty simple to, if we wanted to start livestreaming. But with the technology that we have right now, in order for me to livestream these to our YouTube, um, channel, I just need a laptop and a decent camera, and, and not a camera, a webcam. And I, I have a webcam, and I tried setting it up. It would take basically, now, I've got, I'm sitting right here doing with two laptops right now, just to do the YouTube stuff so it comes out, or the Zoom stuff so it comes out right. I'd have to take a third laptop with that, with that webcam. I took one of these laptops the other day, and I put it at the very end, positioned it in that corner. So, I'm trying to fit, I was trying to figure out how well would it be, um, how well would it come out, video and audio, which is that simple of a setup without fancy wiring for sound and everything else. And especially if this stuff's turned and that's over there. And what I found was, um, the audio is really good. I could stand back here and talk about at this level, and that little cheap webcam that I had stuck on the top picked up the audio really well. This was not on it, hooked up to nothing. The video was even good. The, the problem was the widescreen. I could get the council and that side of the room, and I could get here, but I could not get anybody else attending the council. And I think that's important also. Now, once we get to the point where we're turned around and the chairs are lined up in the middle, that might work really well. And that might be all we need to do. But oftentimes, in, in my research on this, a lot of times, depending on how professional you want to be, you hear them talk about having to get third-party encoding software. And that's, that's something that I was thinking, that we probably want to do because of the sound that we have. And with that encoding software, the only reason I need it and the reason for it is to make improvements to your audio and visual, to your video and, and sound. So, with, with that encoding software, basically, then we'd be able to plug into this sound system. But once we get anything turned around, I'm not even so sure we need that. Uh, but Danielle, obviously, her, has got her job here. We would still need that camera there for Arby, if we're going to continue to do that. If I'm sitting here, we may have to have another city employee sitting over there, clicking on go live.
Kurt, what's the, Annie was trying to, kind of, kind of looked like an Alexa.
Called the old.
But it stood, stood that tall, and it had a camera on top.
Yes.
And it automatically went to whoever was talking.
Yeah, I, I've looked at that.
Yeah, quality's there, yeah.
Yeah.
Blood's green.
I've looked at that, I can't remember the cost of those, a couple grand or something. They weren't, they weren't real cheap.
Again, yeah, the library didn't pay for where it came from, the library, the big.
Viking library system?
Viking library system.
So, you guys already have what you need to videotape your kind, library board meetings?
Apparently. I don't know how many books it does, but yeah, I think we could. I mean, same thing as this, we're, we're, there's always an option to zoom there too, so it'd be kind of, I know that camera was good, nicely. The last, last one was the first time, our last meeting was the last, first time we used it.
Yeah, because that's got a built-in camera, sound, and everything.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, for right now, I don't know if the intent was to get them on YouTube channel, they are, we uploaded them, or if you guys were looking live, I don't know. What, what was your intention?
I'd like to go live also.
Okay. Well, it'd be nice to see how that, it'd be nice to see how that all works, because that might be the solution. But I don't know how, you know, it'd be nice to see what the library does with it, and how good your videos look on your channel with it.
I, I don't know. I mean, you, the first time I saw it was when you saw it, it seemed to work the way it should. I mean, and I don't know if that has to do with internet speeds and how everything's operating. I don't know anything about it.
That's the one thing, is we might have to increase our internet speeds here at City Hall too, but. Okay, so after the YouTube channel, I attended a, a virtual meeting with Art of Power CDA, or Art.com CDA again. We have them monthly, and they're talking a lot about housing and housing programs. I also had a discussion with Gov Office on our website. Our website is very outdated, and the way we have information, just because of the, with the COVID stuff, we've just thrown everything on the homepage, so people don't have to dig for anything. And I was talking to them the other day, because I, I want to get it more organized. But we're so outdated, they said they have another version of the website. Yours is, it's, basically, it's free to the standpoint that we do pay a fee for it, but it's a free version of their templates. And we control where and how often things are changed, and that's what I like about it, because we can update the information as we want to without paying somebody to do it. But they have a new, modern, more modern version of it, that regardless of what kind of a device you're looking at, you see it right. Right now, if you go with a, with a iPhone or a cellphone to our website, you, it's, it's all messed up. But with this new version, whether you're on a tablet, a, a phone, or a laptop, or whatever, it all comes out right. And so, um, it's not going to cost us anything for that. The council already did, if you recall, probably some time ago, approve us to start, to spend some money to start putting our images, our pictures of things in Pelican on our website. And we can do that, but we have to have a different level of our agreement, or our, our template or agreement with them. But for now, I'm going to start working with them and, and revising or redoing our website with this new version. It's just going to be a lot of moving stuff around, and so, I'll work with them to do that. It's just going to be some time, but, so I'm starting to work with them on that. I attended the pool meeting last night, and today, I attended a Coalition of Greater Minnesota's meeting with the state virtually regarding the state's daycare crisis. And there is a crisis out there, no doubt. I don't know what kind of demand there is in Pelican for daycare, but I kind of believe there's a huge demand. Based on how I was getting out there. And that drives our labor force. People can't find daycare here, they're not going to move here to work here. So, it's, it's a big deal everywhere, and so.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware to ask somebody that worked at the daycare underneath the riverfront on Main. That was, that's been closed since April.
Yeah.
And there was, there was no kids coming to daycare, so they shut the doors.
What was interesting about this, this, this webinar was why it's so hard to solve this problem, you know? What was interesting about this, this, this webinar was why it's so hard to solve this problem in all these communities. You know, in the past, just real short and brief here, but in the past, most of the daycares were senior citizens that were doing it for a little extra money and they could have kids in, you know, in their house and they didn't mind and gave them something to do. But it's gotten to the point where the regulations are an issue and, um, also the costs are an issue. And you don't, and so a lot of the seniors don't wanna do anymore. And because of the continual training you have to do and all kinds of issues with it. Well, they're finding that the seniors are getting out of it and the millennials don't wanna have a home-based business. Which means now it costs more because if you wanna pu, open a business on Main Street, your cost of, you know, capital costs are much higher. And you don't make a whole lot of money doing daycare. So it's a, it's a, it's a huge issue that they're continuing to try to figure out. And it's a combination of funds and deregulation.
Yeah, regulation I know is.
That's, that's the, that's the big.
I was just talking last week to a family in town that's opening a daycare in town. And high cost to bring everything to COVID, first of all, for a daycare. It's just a whole bunch of red tape, well, boiled down to.
So that's one report.
Okay. Any questions for Don?
I do. Uh, you know, you talked about rearranging, uh, putting us down here possibly. Could you give us an idea before you actually move it and can we, will we be able to see each other? I mean, it won't be a straight line?
Yeah, basically, your folding table's gonna be in the lobby.
I really, no, I.
So like, so like I said, basically, the two ends, Steve's section there and your section there come on and we put the, we just slide the ends over, turn it, and you still have, over here, you're gonna have those three panels and then it'll, we'll jet out on the ends. So you'll still be basically setting in the, in the configuration you are right now up on this end. Danielle and I won't be there, just like, you know, you'll have two councilmen right there and you'll have two councilmen right there. Danielle and I will be someplace else. Then you'll have, you'll have rows of, of folk, of chairs going back with the aisle down the center with the podium, is the way I see it anyway, with the podium setting right in the center. So somebody wants to address the council, they walk up to the podium, address you guys. You guys can see everybody and they can see you.
So again, you're talking about like three in a row, uh, in a straight section?
You'll all just move in as.
Yeah, right now you.
Why would I be that close to Kevin, but?
You'll be, you'll be.
You'll be the same.
I'd move here, I'd move here, Steve would move here. Kevin would move over one and you'd move over one and that'd be it.
So basically, you're right, every, all you guys would just shift over one chair.
No, no, I do.
Still, still the same distance between you.
Still the same, still the same distance and a little bit of an angle.
You still don't have to shower before you can.
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don. Uh, item number, uh, fifteen, mayor report, a few items, uh, last couple of weeks. I've continued to submit weekly mayor's calls to Pelican Press. I conducted a conversations with the mayor of Historic City Hall on January twenty seventh. I attended a Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day via Zoom on the twenty seventh of January, there was calling in and, uh, listened to the heads of the Senate and also the House of Representatives and they spoke about LGA and what, you know, what the plans were and nobody really had a plan at that point. And that's why we signed that resolution tonight, that hopefully that will not be decreased. And also we had an opportunity that day to later call in to your legislator and speak to them. You couldn't do it on that Zoom call, it was later that afternoon. Uh, attended a twenty twenty-four Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Steering Committee meeting on the twenty eighth of January. I've visited a few businesses in downtown area and then also with the new business that opened up here in Pelican Rapids. I had a meeting with, uh, Police Chief Statham and also a resident on Third Street Northwest regarding the snowmobiles uh, going down the street and up on a yard and, uh, chief took care of that situation. Attended a local foods, local places steering committee meeting, uh, second of February, have you heard that this evening? What they were talking about then was brought before the city council appeared this evening. I, and I mentioned before, I talked to the library architect regarding the punch list for the library roof and also tasks that have to be completed this time. Um, within the last couple of weeks, I've attended some League of Minnesota Cities Elected Leadership Institute meeting. That, that's held during, at Zoom during the noon hour. There's one more to go, it's been very informative. And then I also met with Administrator Solga to review the agenda for this evening's council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other business, yes.
I, before I, uh, I should have brought this up for the planning commission, if you work on their, those are the minutes from the end of August.
Same here.
True? No, these are from, anyway, the Jerry and Cherry Linus, we have, at the last meeting, we were, we had that housing discussion, so we didn't talk about this. We haven't really heard anything else about that building that, that they wanna build and I don't know if they've thought anything.
No, I have, depend on how that was decided.
We don't really know anything about that. And then my, a, a question, if, if the library hired that, the children, do we have to approve that hire?
Again, in my opinion, if there are city employees, the city council should approve all hires of city employees. And it should have been a recommendation from the library board to the council.
But you received no, you received no recommendation? So we don't have to approve it even, because we approved the board, like when they.
I think you guys should approve, whether they brought it to you or not, I think you guys should approve the hire of that person. I believe that. Just a motion.
Like, and she was at, the.
Seventeen forty-five?
Forty-five, yeah.
Step three or something like that?
Yeah.
Is it step three?
Right.
So I.
And the name?
Nanette Albrecht.
Okay.
So I guess I move to approve the hire of Nanette Albrecht at step three.
All right.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Giving none, all in favor, signal five, I say aye.
Aye.
Close the same, motion carry. Seeing no other business or a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signal five, I say aye.
Aye.
Close the same, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Well, they want, they wanna, they basically want to build a pool. Per the ordinance, they have to, it has to have a, it can't be a pool, it has to have a.
And it has to be approved signing, I think I read that report today, and they didn't. So they were, they were looking, they're gonna get hold of them in order for something to try to change one.
The way we left it, and I don't know if we can talk about it, I don't know if we were for sure, but the way we left it.
I, I believe there's something you can talk about.
The way we left is we, we told them, really the signing thing is something we can deal with after the fact, but until they get their foundation.
Keep it busy?
Build the.
Huh? Why'd you say it like that?